Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the city of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for invocation? Mr. Arjona, can you lead us, sir?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioner, and the committee members, guests. Under presentation, Mayor, we have presentation electricity analysis by the Valley and Energy Sources. Tonight, we have Mr. Rudy Ramirez here with us present that is going to talk to us about an analysis that they did on the what their department has to offer. As you know, the pretty much all prices as far as gas, electricity has gone up. So there's a solution that we may look into, venture into. And obviously, this is just a presentation. Later on, we can come back on a discussion with maybe opening up for RFQs or RFPs. But for now, it's just a presentation for Mr. Rudy Ramirez.
So the analysis is here in the city?
Yes, it's what we did here in the city. We basically did a PR back, I believe it was nine months ago in the summer of 2021. And we gathered up some information as far as what the rate is, when the current contract is going to expire, what the current contract entails, what type of price components are charged, what type of price components are being passed through. And from there, we'll be able to do some analysis and see what lights are being on, what lights are being used, you know, what our services could benefit the city, basically.
So if I'm not correct me if I'm mistaken, but does our contract expires December sometime?
December 2023, correct.
This year?
Of this year, yes.
Got it.
The city is...
That nickel time so that we can hear some presentations so that we can go out and request for some sort of proposals?
Yes, I did bring some proposals as well. We did shop around with five providers and we bought the best three back just so you guys can see where numbers are at right now. But some of the cities that do go out in 2023, we did this around November of last year, but we're able to still see some savings right now, the way the pricing have gone up. You know, we're not there right now. We do offer some, is it the power point you want? So we are Valid Energy Sources, we're based out of Far, Texas.
From where, sir?
Far.
Far.
City of Far.
Yes, sir.
What we do is we do energy procurement and supply management, market research and intelligence, strategic risk management, renewables, solar, wind, client services, rate verification. We go over everything that has to do with energy, information, data, rate tariffs. If we're seeing spikes on AEP side, we go and we work with AEP and try to find if each meter is in the right classification. Demand side and management and kind education. We, you know, we hold workshops with the energy manager or if anybody's in charge of utilities here in the city, we work with them hand in hand to, you know, make sure everything that has to do with electricity is being run efficiently. There's some of the clients that we have across the South Texas region. We have a couple of cities and school districts. This is the way energy is looking right now as far as air cut, where the red indicates a bunch of spikes. Voluntary, there's no, there's no secure price point in South Texas right now. It moves every day, it moves every minute.
Fluctuates.
Fluctuates, yes, sir. This is natural gas prices through throughout the years. It's very small here, but right here, we have from 2005 to 2020, the difference on the first slide, which is spiked up. Under that one, we have through the past three presidents, Joe Biden, Donald Trump, obviously with the Joe Biden, it spiked up, which is the bottom one right here. And then another natural gas through the past 20 years, which it's on the increase. Our energy price components with the energy that we're going to, that we shopped around includes all price components. There's nothing that's passed through like the current electricity contract that's with the city right now. All price components are, it's all one fixed rate. Swing and bandwidth, what swing and bandwidth indicates is it's a price, it's a, it's a protection that's in the contract that if for some reason we decrease consumption by 20% or increase consumption by 20% or larger, there's no, there's no price deflation, you're not going to get hit with any fees, any AEP fees, any fees from the provider. Everything's going to be, you have swing, you're able to use a million kilowatts a month or zero kilowatts a month and not be charged with any fees. Like right now with GEX, you get charged fees for not hitting a certain price point. What was that?
Textile.
It protects, it protects, yeah. Blending extend, blending extend, what a blending extend benefits the city is if the price does drop and you lock in a higher price, when the price does drop, you're able to blend the rate, what it is an extended contract. That's an extent, and this is, these are certain things we'll put in the contract to benefit the city if the price does ever drop during any agreement. We're a turnkey operation, we have done, this is some of the stuff we've identified with some of the cities that we've worked with, with the city of Roma, they're paying taxes. We accumulated, we recovered $128,000 and we decreased their budget by 30%. This was back in 2020. With the city of La Jolla as well, they were paying, they were paying city taxes and we put them on a contract before Winchester Muri, when Winchester Muri happened, there is a big, I'm sure the city got hit with a big fine from TCAP for not being fully protected on a fixed all-in rate. So we're able to get the city of La Jolla in a fixed all-in rate as well as I was said, city of West Loco right before Mr. City Manager Mike Betis went out and retired. We were able to procure electricity contract for the city of West Loco as well as the city of Alamo. On this next, we have a quote sheet here. And this is with NG Hudson and AP Geneve. And these are the rates right now, right now, if the city is currently at a 3.8, 3.85, and that's with pass-through, so that's not a fixed rate, it ends up coming around around a 4.3 all-in once you add all the, all the price components that are pass-through. What we're offering right now is 84 months at 6.4. There's no savings right now because of the way the price is, we're at a $40,000 annual increase. And this is, this is throughout the board. And we have Hudson with a 6.589 and we have AP Geneve with a 6.52, which are higher than what the city's paying right now. But like I said, there's more, there's different terms here. The cheapest one being a 6.423 at 84 months. That does offer a blending extend, 100% bandwidth.
Let me ask you, so all the, like the ones that are highlighted, all of them will have those same restrictions or the same components to it, right?
Yes.
The ones that you're stating are not?
Yes, yes.
Because they're different companies, obviously.
There are different companies, but these are the companies that do offer the 100% blending extend and 100% bandwidth. So blending extend meaning that we could always go and renegotiate the contract once it's into our favor.
If it's, if it's... I'll carry the same thing, not a matter of, you know, choosing whichever one.
Yes. But these are the ones that offer a blending extend. There are other providers that offer it, but the verbiage doesn't make sense. It's not really to the customer's favor, it's if they want, if they want to. This is upon the customer's request and they will honor it.
If you come back and you relay the information in reference to the blend extend?
Yes, as soon as we find that there is a dip, we would notify the provider, as your consultant would notify the provider and say, hey, there's a price decrease, we want to extend six months to get this, to capture this lower rate.
So once we, I mean, the city decides and we have a fixed rate, how long does that fixed rate go?
As long as, as long as the city decides. So let's say we do right now 84 months, it'll be 84 months, but we see a price dip with six months in the contract. We'll extend the contract a minimum of six months and get the lower rate.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So your standard contract is 84 months?
No, it's not. But that's where the cheapest price is, the longer term.
Oh, of course, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right now, it's the longer term, just the price is, prices are predicted to increase in there 20% to 30%. I don't want to come here and say that, but that's the reality, the price is going to continue to increase. So we'll see decrease, I would say 2024, 2025, where, you know, we'll start seeing the numbers go back down. But as of right now, we're, everything has gone up since January. I presented Mr. Arjona in the preliminary meeting and we did see some savings, but there's a lot of stuff going on with elections that we weren't able to present to capture a lower rate and see some actual savings.
So you analyzed, what you said earlier, you analyzed?
Yes.
My next question to you is, did you look at the plans as far as, did you analyze the new city hall?
The new city hall is...
Was that included in?
Yes, it's going to be 30,000 square feet, I need 30,000 square feet. So we're anticipating another 500 half a million kilowatts annually just on that building. And we did implement it on the rate, yes. So we did do that. We did identify a couple of other electricity meters that are not being, that are not being used at all, but they're still being charged. That's, it was a four ESIDs. What else do we have? With NG, with one of the companies that came in the lowest, NG has 2020 inside. You're able to manage all your locations, which is all the ESIDs through a portal, which will be utility guy, utility manager that you guys have outside. And you can price, you can see your sewage, you have a specific price and track on how the energy is being consumed at your sewer, at your sewer, or at any, at any other building, your police department, your city hall, your library, anywhere. You're able to get a specific price point on how much kilowatts is being used by square foot.
Now, can we get, can we get those type of reports like on a monthly basis?
Yes.
Through your company?
Oh, through our company, yes.
Like, but not utilizing our employee to be doing all the research?
Yeah, we'll do that on our own as well.
Okay, yeah.
This is just some, so we train somebody with the city so they know more or less. And then if they have any problems, you know, they can come with us, but we'll do a monthly report as well.
So you train the individual to?
To use the portal.
Yeah, to learn how to do it.
Yes, it's a system, you log in and then the city has 77 ESIDs, 74 which are being used, three are not, have no energy. So we'll be, we'll set them up and we'll teach them how to use a portal. And you could, you could even put water in sewer. It's a, it's a pretty neat portal, it's new and everything turns on. You can see all locations from one spot, you don't got to be going and, you know, pulling everything, everything on the NG, NG 2020.
Is it under like professional services?
It's not under professional service, but there's an exemption regarding.
There's an exemption, I think it's TML lawsuit.
Exactly, under, under the energy part.
On the energy and water one source.
Yeah.
So you don't, technically doesn't have to go out for RFPs.
Exactly, so I'll go out and confirm that for you. But I, they did it annalmo and there was, there's an exemption, an exception regarding that.
Well, you know, I would just like for, just to see the comparison compared to the other vendors that are out there. And just to kind of compare and see, you know what I'm saying? Before we make, just to be transparent.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's all this is.
Right.
But this is good information that you're sharing with us and it sounds pretty...
Another, another thing that we, you know, because we're always in South Texas and where the energy comes out a lot, you know, energy this and that's what's happening in the news itself. We try to make it as far as everything, get it from the provider. You can get all these, all these efficiencies through the provider, through AEP. You don't have to hire outsources because everything, everything's through the energy. So AEP does have a city program where it's called the City Smart Program, where they do help with, with efficiency programs and LED, solar, chillers, anything that has to do with energy efficiency and to run the city more efficient and to decrease consumption. That's the main goal right now is to decrease consumption so that there's no blackouts in the valley. We want to, we want to avoid that. So with, with programs like this and making everything more energy efficient, then we would, we would do our part as a city to decrease any rolling blackouts or, or things that happen every Winchester Muri. Less strain on the grid, that's what we want to emphasize.
And what was your name again, sir?
My name is Rudy Ramirez.
Any questions for Mr. Ramirez? Members of the commission? Not, thank you so much, sir, appreciate this presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item, Mayor Commissioners, under presentation, we have different departments. We have the presentation of Department of Finance, Fire Department, Police Department, Municipal Court, and Department of Utilities. Every department director is here already available, should you have any questions for them?
So any questions for the directors? I guess for the, the only question I have in reference to the police department, do we still have that, when you call the main line, you know, the, what is it called? Yeah, the automated system.
As far as on the calling PD?
We still do? I don't like it, the citizens that I spoke to don't like it.
Well, the problem, when they press PD line, they don't get through and they want to speak to somebody.
And back then, how it used to be, you know, even when I, when I first started here, I was a dispatcher when I first started here at the city and we would get the calls like directly, you know what I'm saying? And I know it's a task, it's tough, you know, but I've known that we've gotten, well, I just want to make sure, I just want to, let's take a look at that, let's, let's assess it and see how many calls, volume of calls come in and stuff like that. But you know, the major deal is that the citizen wants to speak to someone from the PD and if someone, they just want to hear somebody to, to transfer the call instead of hitting the automated. I think we brought this up a while back, you know, but...
And even if, even if it's not the dispatchers who wants getting the call, I think somebody from PD should be getting the calls, maybe one of the clerks or wherever they can route the calls out. And the same is going to go with city hall, as a matter of fact, Mayor Commissioners, this is one of the items that is for discussion tomorrow morning as far as on our switchboard, calling city hall. Because a lot of people are complaining that we have that press one, press two, one, two, three, four, five. And even though it's only a minute of waiting, a lot of people get antsy because they want to talk to somebody right away.
Yes, correct. But, but the city hall and the PD is two different.
Right, no, no, I agree.
Different calls, you know what I'm saying? And that I can totally agree with, you know, but as far as having a direct line with the PD, someone picking up and speaking to a dispatcher or assign somebody, you know, taking calls for that day, I just don't know and it's just something that has been brought to my attention several times already.
And even if, even if it's not the dispatchers who wants getting the call, I think somebody from PD should be getting the calls, maybe one of the clerks or wherever they can route the calls out. And the same is going to go with city hall, as a matter of fact, Mayor Commissioners, this is one of the items that is for discussion tomorrow morning as far as on our switchboard, calling city hall. Because a lot of people are complaining that we have that press one, press two, one, two, three, four, five. And even though it's only a minute of waiting, a lot of people get antsy because they want to talk to somebody right away.
Yes, correct. But, but the city hall and the PD is two different.
Right, no, no, I agree.
Different calls, you know what I'm saying? And that I can totally agree with, you know, but as far as having a direct line with the PD, someone picking up and speaking to a dispatcher or assign somebody, you know, taking calls for that day, I just don't know and it's just something that has been brought to my attention several times already.
Person that moves it back and forth. It's really, who's going to pick up a call? Right, we'll analyze and we'll maybe come up with some fun groups. This one doesn't answer, go to the next one, next one to somebody answers the phone.
Yeah.
But I agree, and something like this, especially safety, it has to go, somebody has to pick up the phone.
Yeah, yeah.
And I agree, Mayor, because you're actually forcing the citizen to call 911 when it's not a 911 call. You know, that's, that's a big issue that we've had in the prior ages to work at. And we had a non-emergency phone number that belonged to the PD, which is for non-emergency. In other words, around where CAT, something already occurred versus 911. And when you have people calling that automated system and they need a police officer to hang up and call 911, when all reality is not a 911 call. So maybe we can pick up a non-emergency number that's designated just for the PD itself where somebody can answer. But Mayor, you are right on that aspect, I've had some issue.
Did we ever get, I guess this for Mayor, did we ever get the, a computer installed inside the courtroom for the, your staff there to be looking up? So they can work? So if the judge asks a certain to check on this individual's background or if he's got anything pending, they can go in there and look? Okay, now let me ask you this, what about a phone line? You don't have a phone line? Okay, so if the judge asks one of your, your employees to call maybe a victim or anything like that while they're in court, they don't have access to calling from court, right? Okay. Okay, okay, so we may want to maybe put a line in there? Okay, yeah, because that's very important that we have, I know, you know, I've had situations where the judges had asked, but you know, there's not a phone line where they call because they want to see, get in reference to a bond reduction or something like that, you know, talk to the victim and see if it's okay or, you know what I'm saying? So I just want to make sure it's, they have access to it right there in court. Or even maybe, I don't know if they use their own personal phones or they step outside like how you mentioned, but... Sure, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's why, so, okay, thank you, man. Any other questions for the directors? Where are we at, Mr.? Hold on, I know, just want to make sure it's on the agenda. Fire Department, on the, the building, transferring it over to, or, you know, we're going to, you know how we're going to do the new fire station?
As a matter of fact, we're working on getting out, we went out for bids already, right, on that sewer line? Mr. Martinez? We went out for bids already on the sewer line? That item was already bid it out? Not yet? Okay, so I know that the first thing we're going to do was go out for bids on the sewer line. We're also working on the, on the water line. So once the sewer, the sewer bid goes out, that we receive it, we're going to do both things at the same time. Pretty much, we're working on the water line already as we speak. We have the plans already that I received today from ERO along with the contract so that we can sign off on that so they can move on that. I'll double check on that bidding for the, for the sewer line, you have been out with that? And we'll do that ASAP? Right. It has to, it has to be done before we actually go out and start demolishing or disassembling that, that fire station. But we'll do that. And that's just, as a matter of fact, like I said, I got the, the last prints today for approval. And I do have the schedule, we'll bring up an update at the next meeting for all the scheduled updating, pretty much all that, not only on the, on the fire station, but also on the city hall and whatever, whenever, also the update on the, on the new parks.
Yeah, no, that's good. Yeah, I was just wanting to see where we're at on that.
I know we have a cost estimate and that's the reason why we're not going with a bid because it went over the threshold.
Any other questions for the directors? If not, we'll go ahead and move on, go ahead, sir.
Next item on the public hearings, an order says we have a full of public hearing for a proposed, we're calling the north side part located of West Sioux Road and Veterans Boulevard next to the city of San Juan Water Works or Water Plant to be funded in conjunction with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Parks Grant. Due to San Juan's growing population, the parks will fill a gap in safe, accessible outdoor recreation for residents in this area of the city, many of whom live below the poverty line. One of the stated goals in San Juan Park Master Plan is to expand the park system to provide inadequate distribution of park facilities to meet the residents' needs citywide, including the specific goals of developing a park in the northeast area of the city where this project is located. Again, this is a requirement so that we can proceed with a grant that we're going to be submitting. This is a public hearing, this is one of the requirements that needs to be done. Mr. Patrick?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Commission. So yes, this proposed park is, is it's in order to meet the goals of the San Juan Parks Master Plan and in compliance with the 2019 through 2024 Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Strategic Plan. The city of San Juan is seeking funding to develop and construct a 7.675 acre park in the northeastern San Juan. The city intends to construct a parking lot, recreation center, all-inclusive playground, all-inclusive splash pad, pavilion, open play and exercise area, including a basketball court, a couple of soccer fields and walking trails. So over the last few years, as we've been looking at the city, that area is very deficient in parkland. And this would meet a big part of our master plan that we developed just a couple of years ago and was approved by Texas Parks and Wildlife. So this park would meet quite a bit of needs, an indoor facility and outdoor facilities and overall parkage for the city of San Juan.
Also on the master plan, it does call for a park, not necessarily with an address, so we need to update the master plan so that we can indicate it on that, on the plan that is going to be here pretty, pretty soon taking place.
Efficiency, right? This is first stage of getting the process going as far as the grant finalized and all that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Let me, let me just go ahead and move. This time, I'm going to open this up at 6:27 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any discussions, members of the commission? You're absolutely correct, Mr. Willingham, this is something that we've been at it for some time. Finally, we're at this point, which is great. That's just living proof that this is showing progress in our city, not only with parks, but with everything else. I know on the north side, I've been talking to Mr. Arjona as well in the past as far as something needed to be done on the north side because the people on the north side have been asking for, you know, a park or, you know, for, for the community over there. So I think this is a great idea. I know we're, we're about to get there pretty soon as far as the groundbreaking, groundbreaking. Hoping we can do it, but maybe...
We're hoping that we can actually get it done next week, we're still tweaking some items.
Yeah.
When you see the, the last final rendering on that part, you're going to be amazed as to what ERO had, has been able to do with this park at the time, yes.
For the public?
Right, we're going to buy the public, as a matter of fact, that we talked about maybe...
I think, Mr. Arjona, I think we should push it maybe another week. Let's do it in two weeks and you know why? Because I really think that we need to blow this up, you know, I really inform the community, give IT and everybody time to make it great, you know, and maybe we can go out and reach out to some people from the north side who are willing to come over and be part of this little groundbreaking. Let them, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's for them, you know.
Beautiful facility. What we've seen so far and the work that ERO has actually done in that place is amazing. I want to thank Mr. Garza, I know we spoke to him, I spoke to him last week, was it on Friday? Before I knew, ya tenía el parque, go clean the area. So he moved on it, the machinery is all there, he did a very well job as far as cleaning that place. Thank you for taking that initiative. And like I said, we're just planning for, for the new park, it's all team effort and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, and thank you, your crew, your employees as well. Let them know that we're very appreciative, not only of what you've been doing at the park, but what you've been doing in the whole city. It's a big difference, I know Mr. Arjona, talked to him... It's a big difference, I know Mr. Arhona, talked to him today and he did make a you know, he's always speaking highly of a very director here. But he did mention that, you know, you guys are really moving, just like everyone else.
Mayor, I got some comments as well as far as the actual more, what was it, no, no, all acres. And there's a huge difference, I mean, it was, it's just very, very clean now. And long time coming stuff, so that's just kudos to your staff, yourself.
So going back to the park, Mr. Arhona, I think let's try to push it back one week. And 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 just to give everyone enough time to to do what they need to do as far as IT, as far as the parks and reg, Mr. Juarez as well. Uh because I know right now we're going into the Fourth of July, so we're already gonna burn one week. So that's, we're not gonna even plan for the park.
And and I want to thank you for that because I know that we've been kind of stressing out as far as.
No, I know, I know, I totally understand.
The way we can do, we get more.
Yeah, so we can, yeah. So we can just push it back.
Most definitely, yeah.
And I guess get with the commission, when would be a good time? For me, I mean, you just let me morning, afternoon, whatever you all think is a good time, just let me know, I'm fine with whatever time you all want to do it. So.
Yeah, you're right.
So, okay.
Talk about the timeframe, our timeframe from when we plan to start after we finish our hearings, the park and our estimated uh.
It it'll take about maybe about a year to finish. Uh as far as the timeframe, uh we're looking at anywhere between once we do the groundbreaking, maybe a month, two months after that. Uh I know that we're trying to uh solidify some of the grants that we're looking at, maybe some earmarked monies from some of the elected officials. Um but yes, it'll be any any anytime in that timeframe. So as soon as we know that we do the groundbreaking, as soon as we know that we got some earmarked monies, we can kick up on that.
Get with the congressman and maybe office and state rep, Armando's office and even bring in Hollis. Hollis is a big part of.
Hollis is very involved on this already.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so invite him as well, you know what I'm saying? So so we can make this very nice for the people on the north side. Okay, any other question, well, any other questions or any comments for Mr. Willingham or Mr. Arhona? No, I'm gonna go ahead and close this at six thirty two PM. Is there a motion to approve? I'll second that, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, sir, the next item on the consent agenda, today we have uh item A, B, C, D. Um if you have any questions, we can always put them out for any further discussion on these items.
At this time, um is there anything we need to modify or amend under consent agenda? Modify or amend? If not, is there a motion to approve? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I forgot, let me, sorry.
The next item on the executive session, it says pursuant to section five five one point oh seventy four, under personal matters, discuss the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee and uh today's director of utilities.
Time, uh is there a motion to enter executive session?
So vote.
I'll second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will enter executive session at six thirty three PM, thank you. Back uh from executive session at six fifty
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Under executive session, pursuant to section five five one point oh seven four, personal matters, discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee director of utilities. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve our city manager's recommendation Vila Mon Olvera as a utilities director, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been, I moved. It's been second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This meeting has been adjourned at six fifty eight PM, thank you.